Welcome, everybody. We're going to start the meeting. We have everybody in attendance. So let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible,天地无疆. Okay, first item off will be the meeting agenda. No changes on the agenda? So, honor data open? Motion by Brenda? Second by Brittany? Any discussion on the agenda? You know, discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye? Those both same? Opportunity for visitors to address the board. As a reminder, a public comment period will be available to you to address the board directly with comments or concerns about topics within the board's control or expression. Public comment is not meant to be a question or answer session, but rather an opportunity for you to make comments directly to the board. It is not the intent of the Board Administration to provide answers or questions raised during the period, but we will consider comments and whether any future board action will be necessated. And as a reminder, visitors may not discuss or share any private or personal data at school board meetings. Any student program or personal concerns must be first brought to the appropriate building administrator. Hey, we have anybody who wants to address the board?
Thank you. I'm Charlie Glitz. Most of you know, I wasn't going to address the board, but then I figured I've had an opportunity to get a board meeting for a while and I found myself agreeing to the agenda, so I thought it was natural that I talked. Anyway, I want to thank you for considering five-day school week. That's what I'm here and concerned about. I was one of the few people that, along with John, that was involved with that decision and read my comments in the paper and I know each board number, received the letter. And I feel that I learned that, that whole thing, and that's why I'm still passionate about it. Although I will tell you, I've changed 100%, 180 degrees. I was the person that pushed it. And now I'm the person that'd like to see it go away. I know you can't ask any questions. I'm available if you feel you need to. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else that can address the board? Okay, carry on. Start with some acknowledgements. We have the fall coaches and advisors and athletes and participants.
Hey, Brian. Thank you to all the coaches and advisors for all their work, their time, their effort, and thank you for all the athletes and participants for their work in representing Pelican Rapids schools.
And we have cross-country, Section 8A, team academic awards, boys silver, oh, excuse me, girls gold. We have Charlie Larson, 11th at State, and named All-State. Mohammed Ahmed, second team, All-State Soccer. Sebastian Santino, first team, All-State Soccer. Congratulations.
Say that. Congratulations to the boys and girls soccer teams on their achievement, academic achievement. Trey Larson, his accomplishment at State placed in 11th and named All-State as a freshman. Great accomplishment for him. That was great. State cross-country meet is very exciting, very competitive, and it's very eye-opening and the things that you see of these kids going so hard, kids falling down at the end of the race, things like that. And but good accomplishment for Charlie and congratulations to Mohammed and Sebastian on their achievement individually and the soccer team and their section.
Okay, should we move on to administrative reports? We have Mr. Nelson with the elementary principal AD report.
Enrollment, we're at 428, so uptown students from October. BPK was up two students to 43, three-year-olds were up four students to 39, and Head Start was up one to 34, so quite a few new families that have moved into the area, so welcome to those families. We had a workshop today. We had Licks Country come and Mr. Royson did a refresher for everyone on CPR training. Thank him and Licks Country for providing that. Tech team, thank them. They did a presentation on Prometheus boards and the new boards that are out there and what we're looking at. And then we did a top 20 teachers book study groups and got together and very good discussion by the teachers on the top 20 book study that was done by Will Sweeney, who presented here last week. So good workshop today and then after when students or teachers got time to work on their grades, getting ready for teacher work for conferences with our next Monday, Tuesday evenings. This Friday is National Substitute Day, and we'd like to thank all our subs for all that they do coming in and subbing for us. Without them, we would be in a bind every day. We've had up to 11, 12 subs in the building several times this year, so thank you to the subs for coming in and helping us out. And then on December 2nd is Special Education Day. And we'd like to thank all our pairs and special ed teachers for all that they do for our students in special ed. They go above and beyond for our students, so thank you to them. And again, conferences are on next Monday and Tuesday. Activities tomorrow is a choir concert. Thursday evening is the band concert. And the fall play was this last weekend on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon. And then congratulations, Charlie Larson, who left place at the state cross-country meet. Hiring, Madison Avar and Joy Miller as junior high girls' basketball coaches. Logan Norwood's going to do it with cross-country going longer and his graduate classes didn't work out, so these two young ladies have stepped up and are working with our junior high girls. And I'd like to thank Mr. Peter for his 12 years as a head girls' track coach and thank him for his time and dedication to the track program and the years of service at Pelican Rapids.
Any questions? Thank you. So Martina's trying to have support. Okay, a few things to cover. The agenda, I'll go through our treasures report first. Overall, great month for our school district. Started our investment accounts with $4.6 million, and that went down to 4.3. We received $590,000 in state aid, of which I went through $892 to make sure that we make our ends meet. Again, a really good month for the school district in terms of the general fund and all the other funds, cash flow movement. You kind of see it there. The general fund, you'll continue to see a negative throughout the year. We're always playing catch-up. Especially this part of the year, the state is paying back all the receivables that they didn't pay us last year. And for the month of October, it's a, I'm sorry, for the month of November, it's a dry month because we receive our levy payment last month. The state doesn't pay anything in November. They know that you are, have quite a bit of cash on hand. At the end of the day, we have $1.2 million sitting in our checking account available. So again, pretty good month for, pretty good month for the month of October. In terms of journal entries, you know, just a couple miscoatings when it came to some certain activity accounts, for the most part, leaning federal grants, pretty preliminary stuff, making sure the books balance at the end of the month. Collateral report, we have $3.1 million in collateral from our banking, so we have plenty of collateral. We are still working with Amber, who is the Vice President of Minnesota National Bank, to switch over to a swift account. So if you guys see an email that came through her about those electronic signatures, please complete it so we can go ahead and switch accounts and earn higher interest yield. Mr. Corv sign. I know I signed, and I think, I believe, John or Ann, you guys are next, and that'll be great. Yeah, so, yeah, so if you guys need that email, let me know. We can forward it to you guys. Those passwords to be able and electronically sign. But again, collateral report, everything's looking good. Payables for this month, it all pretty, pretty consistent. Like I said, pretty standard month. We've had $765,000 in payables and $368,000 in payroll expenses. A big bill that was due this month was Tech Check. Tech Check is the company at a same cloud who is helping us with all of our technology needs. Pretty much what we pay those $30,000 is all of the infrastructure, the project that we did over the summer. So we switched all of our switches and access points that pretty much run all of our internet and wifi access. 104,000 of that 130 federally funded through the E-Rate program, for which we've been accepted and approved, and I'm just waiting for the check. So essentially, a project that would normally cost the school district close to $130,000 is only going to cost us 25. So again, great work by admin, great work by the tech team on putting this project together. We're now, Mr. Corv and Mr. Nelson, we're now, Mr. Bill Simmons, we're now looking into updating some of those servers that are very outdated. And again, we're going to take advantage of E-Rate and ECC funding for that. That's what I have in terms of the financial treasures report. You guys have any questions regarding the report before I move on to some of those items that we can come action from you guys tonight? In the board agenda, you guys are going to see the resolution for a public hearing for the abatement parking lot. This is the first step on that parking lot project. This is going to kick up everything else, so essentially we want you guys to take action and pass the resolution so we can have a public hearing for the regular December board meeting before, I'm sorry, at 5:30 at the auditorium. Essentially, what this will do is we'll open it up to the public so they can come in and hear about the project, hear about the tax impact. And we'll have, we'll be working with our financial advisor, Mr. Kelly Smith, Baker Tilly, help us put that presentation together. Short after, we have to provide 30 minutes of that public hearing. Short after then, we'll move into our regular board agenda. Again, I don't anticipate much of the public, but if they do, we would love them for you guys to be there so we can talk about what this project's going to look like. And our concept throughout this whole piece is we want to have close to a zero tax impact. And based on the two refinances of our bonds, we should be able to do that. So that's the rest of the questions.
Here's the location of the media center.
I believe is a media center.
That's where we have it right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. So yes, correction. Media Center, 5:30 on December 20th, so not the auditor, not the auditorium. Scratch that from the record, please. The next thing we'll talk about is the master agreement between the Board of Education and the Principals Union. We met with Mr. Nelson regarding some of those changes. Pretty much we're honoring what our past practice has been, that whatever the union has received in terms of salary adjustment, the principles technically follow, so that's what we've adjusted. We've also adjusted the 403 plan, which is the same adjustment that the union received. One of the changes that we did just for future and long-term planning is we restructure our insurance plan with our principals to a tier system. Essentially, now we are saying years one through six, teachers get up to 50%. In situations that you are single, you get $6,000 in contribution, family $12,000 in contribution. Year six and above, I believe it is fully insured. And the reason why we did that is because we want that long-term commitment from any principals that might arrive in the future, just to make sure that they stay with the district, so.
So we did, just one correction, we did zero to nine years, put that percentage, and then after nine.
Yes, thank you. So Mr. Corv knows more than I do. Thank you for that. Strike two for me. And then the last piece, it was just simple changes regarding some of the language, whether regarding duty dates. We're simply saying that in the event that there's a transition to a five-day school week, the contract will cover that. So other than that, it's just changes in terms of when the contract is due and how long it's valid for. So pretty, pretty minimal changes. We did give the time to Mr. Nelson to see if he had any requests, and he gives us a thumbs up, so you know, pretty good negotiations with that union. Then the last piece that we have in the board agenda for you guys to pass a motion and approve is a big project that we got, that we have coming up with climate makers, which is in regards to our HVAC system. It's time for, for us to have an upgrade in our HVAC system. When we did it, it was back in 2012 and 2013. Since then, they have about a 10-life expectancy, which we are at that. In addition to a pandemic upon us, we are in need of newer controls that will run more efficiently at a higher capacity, give our students cleaner air. So Mr. Steves has been kind of the head sphere of this project, contacting climate makers so we can get that process situated. 100% of this funding or the cost for this project is going to come through SRT2, and that is some of those federal dollars that we receive that are specifically allocated for this purpose. So we will not have any impact on our operating budget. It does not come through tax figures, dollars. It is federally funded. So again, last promotion for you guys to approve the, the two proposals that we have. The first one is for the elementary for a total of 139, 769. And then the second is a proposal for the high school for 248, 844. Do you guys have any questions regarding the resolution for public hearing or the principal's contract or the HVAC project?
When will the HVAC project start?
We want to, so in terms of timing, we want to get this approved and signed as soon as possible so we can lock down prices in the event that there's any inflation. We would like to get them done as soon as possible. We're working with Mr. Nelson and Mr. Corv and Mr. Steves and Climate Makers to figure out best timing. We want to make sure that there's no students in the building while this is happening and make sure there's no disruption of classroom time or activities. So if it does happen, I believe we're talking middle spring to late spring, when really there's not a lot of activity going on in the buildings. But if, if they can be done sooner, depending on the availability of items, we're hoping to push it whether it's over the weekends or whenever it is. We are concerned for Climate Makers to be up on our ceiling during wintertime, just for liability purposes, but whenever they can get done, the better. Wonderful. Any other questions? All right. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Enrollment numbers here at, currently we have 413. We started out the school year with 420 at the high school. Professional development at the high school, we have a workshop on November 8th here last week. We have PLCs. Reminder, our focus of PLCs is the top 20 training, staying above the line with Will Sweeney as the presenter. And then the staff had grading in quarter two curriculum planning. And just reminder with the top 20 training, we have books for sale for any parents that are interested in what we're doing here at the school, with staff and, and students. That we do have books that were for sale here at parent-teacher conferences, if they would like one or two review a book to see if they can come to the office. Parent-teacher conference for today at the high school from 1:00 to 7:00 in the Legends Gym. We're back to in-person, which is just nice to have. Reminder, snow days, the first three snow days are makeup in-person days. We have a visit here this Thursday. Representative Jordan Rasmussen has organized a visit with Minneapolis Federal Reserve President Neil Kashkari, Justice Alan Page, and Kevin Lindsay. And they're going to be visiting this Thursday at Viking Elementary at 1:30 to 2:30. And what they're going to do is they have three classrooms, and they're going to reach the three classrooms. The three classrooms are going to visit our, in the third and fourth grade area. So we're working with them to, and the details in the last couple of days here, but they'll be on this Thursday at 1:30. So of course, you know, Viking fans, they know Alan Page quite well, so I think he gets a lot of media attention on his, on his visits. COVID update. Right now, with our COVID, we're doing well. Back on wood, we have a low percentage of positive cases in the elementary building and in the high school. And which has been very good. So we have some holidays coming up here that we'll have to be cautious when people are returning, when people are leaving town. We'll closely monitor our numbers, and then our COVID team will meet when needed. So if our cases go up, we'll call for a meeting and talk about any changes in our portals that are needed, so. Achievement and integration report, we were going to have that tonight. We're going to have that. Not everything was ready for that, so we're going to have everything, the report ready in our December meeting. So we're going to ship that to December and have that approved at our December school board session. Okay? Upcoming events, November 25th and 26th is fall break, and December 3rd will be mid-quarter of quarter two at the high school. We're in quarter two already. Time is flying. Couple of business items, just to review, approving the nomination, Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board. Mr. Carter has served on that board here. Just looking to have a nomination tonight. And then also approve the resolution of the school board supporting formal application to the MS HSL Foundation. That's a yearly approval that we do for that, the foundation. And then the last item, what will be the business items, G will be the approved application, flexible learning year, which would be for the next three years that application's good for. We've had two work sessions that we've had good discussion about the four-day and, and the five-day. I've met with the members of the teachers in both buildings and support staff, and I've provided you their, what they would like to see with the four-day. And so forth. So you have that information. And if tonight, if you approve, we would then go through the application process. It would have to be done by April 1st, but also we, if we go through the application process, we would have to have the calendar of next year to the teachers because that's in the contract by April 1st. So we go through that process. I believe MDE will work with us and try to speed that up. So once we get everything done, they would work with us, who would be approved or not. So even going through the application process doesn't guarantee that we would be accepted to the four-day. If you do not act on approving the four-day, that would mean, so no one would make a motion for a second or both in favor of it, that means then we would be going back to a five-day. We wouldn't need, if we're going to apply, we need to get started on that. Sure. We have quite a few things to get done. And we could have more discussion when it comes to that, so. Okay?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Move on to the consent items. Approve board meeting minutes from October 12th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Financial claims, October bills. Treasures report. And we have accept donations, PRHS scholarship on $20 anonymous. And to me, we've got the personnel. Resignation of Logan Norris, junior high girls' basketball coach. Through the resignation of John Peter as head girls' track coach. Through the resignation of Asmaan Mohammed, especially at Perry at Viking Elementary effective October 31st, 2021. Through the resignation of Courtney Thorsten, especially at Perry at Viking Elementary effective November 25th, 2021. Proven hire, Madison Avar as junior high girls' basketball coach, and approve the hire of Joy Miller as junior high girls' basketball coach. And MF approved the following lane change request at Carly Kirkwood, BA to BA plus 10. That's in parentheses. In motion for the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as red.
Motion by Brittany?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion or anything you'd add? You know, discussion, all those favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye. Aye, those both same. Consent items carry. On to the business items. Approve the employee assistance program known as EAP. Agreement for January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2023 with Lakeland Mental Health Centers. Get some background on that.
Yeah, the nice thing with this program, this agreement, is that the staff get three days for each calendar year. And it is free for them, so, which is really good right now. Well, it's nice to have.
We'll make a motion to approve the EAP agreement.
Motion by Ann. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the EAP program? You know, discussion, all those that favor approving signify by saying aye. Aye, those both same. Motion carries. Approve resolution for public hearing on abatement bond for Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 5:30 in the media center. So entertain a motion and a second amendment to the resolution.
We'll make a motion to approve the resolution related to proposed property tax abatement for a parking lot reconstruction and construction project.
You got that written down? Okay. All right, I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Okay, since this is a resolution, we'll read the resolution. Notice of public hearing on consideration and approval of property tax abatement. Notice is hereby given that the school board of independent school district number 548 Pelican Rapids. Minnesota will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 5:30 PM at the district offices at 310 South Broadway, Pelican Rapids, Minnesota, to consider granting an abatement of the property taxes imposed by the district. See the proposed property tax placement on all properties within district farms. Purpose of granting this proposed property tax abatement is to provide funds to finance a parking lot reconstruction project between the Viking Elementary and the district's athletic complex and construction of a new parking lot across Avenue 59 in the school's performance auditorium, which will enable district residents to continue to conveniently and safely access the facilities. Total estimated amount of the proposed property tax abatement by the district is $1,650,000 over 10 years. All who wish to be heard of the proposed property tax abatement will be given an opportunity to express their views at the time. The public hearing or may file written comments with the finance director prior to, prior to the public. So this is a resolution. Brittany, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I guess, yeah?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Next item off is to approve the nomination for Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board. Run and answer the board. And I would be willing to do it again, if, if not, so.
I'll nominate John Carter for Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board.
Motion by Ann.
Oh, motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Okay.
Second by Molly. I need to read something there. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor of approving myself as a nomination for Lake's Country Service Cooperative Board, signify by saying aye. Aye, those are both same. Motion carries. NMD approved the principal contract for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two to twenty-three. This is what Mr. Martinez explained to us, so we have a motion.
Motion. To approve the principal contract from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Anne, I'll make a second. Any discussion? Here you know discussion, all those in favor of approving the principal contract, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same. Contract carries. Item E is to approve the HVAC project listed by Mr. Martinez. And do we need any special wording for that? No. Motion to approve. Amolled or anything, or just, okay. Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the HVAC project.
Motion by Brittany. Second by Anne, or is it Brenda? Yeah. Any discussion on HVAC project? Here you know discussion, all those in favor approving HVAC projects signify by saying aye. Aye, those are both same, HVAC project carries. Prove the resolution of School Board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. So this is a resolution, so I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'm going to motion to the application for Cook School. Or, yeah. No, I approve the resolution. I make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
The School Board supporting Form A application that MSHSL Foundation.
We have a second.
A second.
Second by Brittany.
John, what these funds are for is for students can't afford their activity. It helps to go to offset those activities so students can participate. Okay, so, right, thanks.
So I'll quick read it here, resolution of the governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletics and arts. Whereas the governing board of Pelican Rapids recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be resolved that the governing board of Pelican Rapids, public schools, sports, schools' application, the Minnesota State High School League's Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activities. Okay, so resolution, so Brittany, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes, yeah?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Resolution carries. NMD approve the application for the flexible learning year. Discussion on it first, or? I know we've kind of tutor all of this with the last work session, so we have a lot of discussion there. So now we need to make a decision if we want to go forward due to the commitments and the the applications, so.
John, I'd like for a few remarks.
Sure.
I mean, historically, I've been I've been opposed to applying for a flexible learning option. But, you know, I, I didn't have, I don't have any data to support the logic that I'm using to to take that position. I feel like I, I sometimes fall into the trap that a five-day school week is the way it always used to be, and that's the way it should be. But after talking, after visiting with the staff and and other folks within our school district, I mean, it's a mixed review. My impression throughout the years, as far as those that are more public with regard to their opinions tend to err on the side of being positive in favor of the four-day school week. I certainly also want to recognize those that have been opposed to it either on a staff, staff level or community level. But, you know, when I read through the Minnesota Department of Education's application and the logic behind, or excuse me, the goals behind what the MDE is looking for in terms of what's to be included within the application, what stood out to me was for any district to be approved for a flexible learning option. What stood out to me, I wrote it, and I might be paraphrasing this a little bit, but the district has to make a compelling argument for why and how flexible learning year status is essential to your district achieving related goals. And before I really looked, dove deep into that Minnesota Department of Education information, I think before I looked at that, I underestimated what truly was evaluated by the Minnesota Department of Education when it came to the district applying board. And you know, we, we discussed this at a prior work session. And, you know, if I'm, if I put myself in the superintendent's position, for example, and I know we've all heard this before, but, you know, I, I don't want to put Mr. Corf in a position where we approve the application, but there's not a real clear-cut position on what the board ultimately would decide if we were approved. But that's, to me, where it comes back to the Minnesota Department of Education demands a compelling argument as to why the flexible learning year is essential to meeting our district's needs. And I think that vetting process really put my mind at ease in terms of how I looked at it. And in light of that, because, because our district would be required to show that compelling argument, now that compelling argument encompasses all kinds of different things, but that's a pretty high standard of meat. And I'm not sure if that's been the same threshold that's had to be met over the course of the last thirteen years. I know there's been changes with regard to how it's analyzed and evaluated by the Minnesota Department of Education, but to me, anytime I see words like compelling and, and being essential to achieving goals, those are pretty strong words to me. And it's really forced me to go a bit outside my comfort zone, because I've been a cheerleader for, since, since we, since our district implemented the four-day school week, to go back to a five-day school week. But, and I, I hope I've been pretty open and honest about this, I don't have data to support my position. And there's no data out there that we can clearly identify and use because there isn't two sets of students and weather conditions and facility conditions that are going to be the same that we can test and compare those two units against. And it's my understanding, based on a conversation I had with Mr. Corf, that a majority of of the staff and students are in support of a four-day school week. I put a lot of weight into that when, when coming to my personal opinion on it. I put, I, I know we've had surveys that went out to the community members at large. And we've talked about how surveys can, it kind of, not that the district ever intended it, but I mean, it all kind of comes down to the question of being able to really interpret. You know, a survey I create will maybe be different than one Brittany creates and so on and so forth. Our goal might be the same, but the way we phrase questions might bring different results, so. I guess, long story short, I'd like, Brian, I, I know, I know you've mentioned it takes a significant amount of your time and resources to put together the information necessary for the application. Do you think if, if the board took action to approve the application that, that time that you and other staff members would need in order to, to spend on that application would materially upset, you know, the other stuff that you do on a regular basis?
I mean, I, if the board, if the board votes to apply for a flexible learning application, we absolutely are going to make it work and go through the process and get everything done. We have a good team that's willing to take parts of the application, take leads on it. I had a teacher come to me and for their master class, they wanted to do some work, so if we do this, go through this process, he's willing to help out with it, so we have people that are willing to, to help with the application.
Um.
But the majority of the work will have to be done in the district office.
And you know, you, you haven't had to do it, you've been involved with it in the past, not, not in your role as a superintendent. Based on that experience, I, I know certainly that you and the staff can do it. But does it take an amount of time that would materially disrupt what, what I kind of consider, and I know you don't know what's in my head here, but what I typically associate a superintendent doing, because historically, twenty years ago, the superintendent of Pelican Rapids wasn't taking time to put together an application for a flexible learning year. So in terms of what your other responsibilities are, you think it would materially disrupt that?
We'd make it work. Thank you.
I think the application, after just doing my own investigation outside of what I was originally, I think, willing to look at, has changed my opinion on the application in terms of I think of it as a great way for the district to be assessed. And I, I look at it as a great way for the Minnesota Department of Education to truly evaluate what is going on here, even more so compared to schools that don't apply. They, they wouldn't have to provide the same information, I'm assuming that. I'm assuming if you don't apply for a five-day school week, there isn't some sort of annual memorandum that has to be approved to the same degree that an application for a flexible year, flexible learning year would have, would that be accurate, Brian? So those are, those are my thoughts, I, I I've, I've had a drastic change from my own personal perspective from even two months ago to now. In terms of my understanding of how that application information gets vetted and evaluated, and if I trust the Minnesota Department of Education, which I have no reason not to, I have no reason to believe that they would allow something to take place unless they thought it was in the best interest of our children, especially in light of the fact of my understanding, and correct me anybody if I'm wrong, especially in the fact, especially in light of the fact that the financial component standing alone cannot be utilized as any supporting reason to approve flexible. Is that right? No, there, there's no longer, Minnesota Department of Education no longer will allow a school district to rely upon. It, I mean, I, I know there's some exceptions to that rule, but I don't think we would need those. I think a school district has to be in significantly, in significant harm's way when it comes from the financial perspective in order to gain approval. I don't see our district in any capacity being in that situation right now. So the way I understand, what I've read and my analysis is the savings to our school, it's immaterial, whether it's seventy thousand a year, a hundred and fifty thousand a year, because the way I understand the criteria, that cannot be treated really in any meaningful capacity when the Minnesota Department of Education determines whether or not we're making a compelling argument that this is in the best interest of our kids when it comes to meeting the the goals of the district that are goals that are approved and stamped with approval by the Minnesota Department of Education.
When I think of the financial piece, the lens they would look at, I understood it right, only that was your district was looking at cuts, meaning, you know, lay down staff, you know, they would look at that in a different lens versus where we're sitting now.
Because I, it's my, it's my understanding that we really wouldn't now, I'm not the one completing the application. There really wouldn't be a significant portion, if any, of the application that would be related to the necessity of the cost savings in relationship to the success of our school district. Accurate? Or would we still, or would the application in your opinion, Brian, still rely pretty heavily upon the financial component?
No, after the, the discussion with him, yeah, I don't believe they're really going to look at our finances, because they asked about that already, and they said, well, you went to the four day because of finances, but now you are financially stable.
So that also, that, that provides an additional layer of comfort for me, knowing that that is excluded and it would be focused so much more primarily on the system that's in place, what the staff's been able to do over the course of the past twelve, thirteen years for the success of our children. And I like to, I don't have data to show four-day school week is better than a five-day school week, and on the flip side, I don't have data to show a five-day school week is better than a four-day school week. I don't want to make a decision because that's just the way it's supposed to be, because all the other districts are doing it. Now, so what I'm getting at is I just wanted to let the other board members know that I'd be, I would be comfortable supporting an application for a four-day school week. For a four-day school week. In light of the compelling argument that has to be made by our district. To clearly identify and show that we would still be able to meet our goals. And to me, when I think of that, that includes meeting any and all goals related to. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, when you had a conversation with the Minnesota Department of Education. They certainly. Aren't crossing their fingers hoping every district at some point, if provide an opportunity applies for a five-day district, five-day school week, they. It's hard to pin the Minnesota Department of Education down, in my opinion, in terms of them really taking the formal position and. When they informed you that the University of Minnesota is now currently doing the study to determine the impact on that. I don't even know how to process that. I mean. They they literally are starting it now or in the process of it. And I'm thinking. What? I look to the M D E, to me, for them to not be able to provide us. Any sort of analysis of data, even if it was based on hypothetical situations. Leads me to. Have an opinion that. Success hasn't been provided or determined by any entity that I'm aware of. Uh, there could be other states that have done it, I'm not sure, and maybe some of you have data to support. A five-day school week is in the best interest of a student versus a four-day school week. Right? I'm I'm certain that I would be supportive. Um, I, the concern is I. I just want, I want, I would hope that that we as a board can provide you the certainty that you need. To feel comfortable that if approved, we would proceed with. A flexible learning year and not say, thanks for the application, we learned quite a bit based on the denial. Let's gear up for a five-day school week because we're gonna, or excuse me. We learned a lot because, hey, we've shown them that a flexible learning year is done well, but. So that's where my concern is. I don't, I don't know how, you know, from an hour standpoint, it makes a difference if I knew if it took. Eight hundred hours of staff time versus a hundred hours or forty hours, you know, that enters into the equation too. Out of fairness to you and the staff that would be involved with the hard work behind putting together the application. But if if you're. Indicating, Brian, that the time wouldn't materially upset the apple cart when it comes to fulfilling. You know, your duties as superintendent, principal, um, and other folks. On the staff and their related obligations and responsibilities. I really, I really would like to see the application presented. And but I'd like to hear from administration and anybody else here that the chair is willing to all speak on it. And other, I mean, I'd like to hear from everybody, but I'd like to get that administration's take on it because. My, my opinion is my opinion. I'm not saying it's right, it's just we form our own opinions and. I really wanted to explain because I I made it clear, I think, in prior meetings, I was pretty. Pretty dead set in saying, we need to have this building filled up with kids five days a week. I think I said something to that effect at one of our prior work sessions. And I made an analysis with regard to athletics and. Now, why does coaching a kid six days a week or your basketball coach encourage a kid to shoot? Basket six days a week or three days a week? I mean, that's, those are the weird thoughts that go through my mind, but after reading the M D E information. And going through the application-related information, it really resonated with me and. I didn't, I didn't do that a year ago, but I have now. Thank you.
Just quick one thing, yeah, with the U of M. So what M D E, our understanding with our discussions with M D is that. They've put a pause on for schools that are not a four-day week currently. Uh, they could not apply uh for the four-day week because they're doing research and they're working with the U of M on the impact of the four-day versus five-day. Well, do we have support for a? To approve the application, we have a a motion supporter. We could maybe call Robert's Rules of Order for discussion or. So we have a motion to approve the application for the flexible learning year.
Mr. Chair, would would you be willing to invite administration to offer their thoughts, suggestions, or opinions and. I don't mean to put administration on the spot, but I guess. I'm really, I don't, you know, really what I'm looking for in terms of what I mentioned, in terms of the staff. They're just general opinion on our students. Achievement during the four-day school week. Me, anybody in administration be willing just to say that, you know. There's no reason not to believe that it's been successful in, in a lot of words. And that. There really isn't any significant indicators suggesting that a five-day school week would materially change. The achievement of our students. And I realize there's no data. Or let me just, let me ask, if the majority of staff, would you say support the idea of a four-day school?
Oh, without doing a survey, you know, surveying all staff, what we've heard through our meetings that we had, when we met with the. Representatives for the teachers and support staff from each building that. The general consensus of that meeting was to reapply and that they liked the four-day week. They, for number of reasons, they felt that it's worked well for staff, it's worked well for students. Um, that it hasn't seen an impact. On test scores, uh, good or bad, and that staff feel well-rested, they feel students well-rested. They like the Monday for appointments, so they're not gone from from school. And for, and students have that same opportunity. So they had a number of reasons. Of why they like the four-day, you know, you hear from staff too, you know, it's been working, it's been working well, we don't hear a lot from parents. That they want to go back to a five-day, however, I'm sure if we surveyed some some parents out there, we're gonna see some that they would want to go back to the five-day. So, um, I'm totally open going through the application, I'm willing to do that. So we can find out more information from parents, I think parents, we're hearing from staff, right, not hearing from parents, so if we want to go through application to. Hear what, how parents feel, um, that we can do that. We also would have to have three open forums, so on open forums, would be for the public to come in and share too. We would probably also do a a survey, so we have to do some other type of gathering information and the survey would be a good way of doing that. But the open forums would be a way for people to come in too and have a have a discussion. With administration and school board members that would have to be there. And we did that right away when we went to the four-day weekend at the elementary gym is where we had our open forums, so. We want more information, willing to go through the process and apply and get more information.
Thanks for bringing that up, Ryan, because that was one question I did have is. The three informational public input meetings, that's required regardless of whether or not you're pre-existing for a school week district.
We would have to go, we'd have to have three open forums, yeah. We have to write down all the concerns that are brought up and then how we find the solutions for them.
And, you know, I, if if we approve the application. Whatever extent possible, we can. Encourage as many community members to voice their input, I mean, that's the goal, I mean, that's why we have open meetings, that's why. These informational meetings are in place. I just, I think all of that vetting. You know. If if we had a full house of a thousand. I don't know, how many, how many folks are in the district, ten thousand? Eight thousand, I don't know, whatever, whatever the case is. Say we had a hundred percent. And there was a vote taken and there was ninety percent of them said, you do not want this, then I get that, that we want to do what. What the, who, what the folks who represented us or who elected us want. Want to do. So. Um, as part of that process, if the board does decide for that application, I don't know what's been done historically to promote the public meetings. I mean, I know there's legal obligations. But my hope is we can go beyond what's legally required for notice, whether that's even personally as board members. To get the word out and to encourage folks to come in because it's a very unique. Issue that I think was created for. One or two reasons, but it's evolved and. It's evolved into something that. Maybe has become a really great thing that just is difficult to determine. Because of not having. The variables available to us to compare apples to apples when it comes to students. In a four-day versus those same students in a five-day. And then public input is so important that regardless of a person's opinion, I mean, that's the whole purpose of them. It's just to really get a push to get folks to come in and express their desires, their questions, their concerns. Whether it's staff, whether it's people that. Have no real strong connection to the school district itself, um. I'd really appreciate everybody's perspective. As many as we can get and. So with that said. My, 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 my stamp of approval in terms of if we do decide to apply for a four-day school week and the M D E allows it. But we have significant overwhelming pushback from the resulting from. Whether it's the three informational meetings or other correspondence we may receive, I mean, I think we would. To the members of the district to take that into consideration and. You know, proceed with how the community wants to do it, that's the whole purpose of it. But thanks for bringing that part up because I wasn't clear on it and I'm very glad you did bring that up because when I read it, I I first looked at it as though. We wouldn't have to go through that if we were a pre-existing district already within a four-day school week.
I guess my take is more on the equity side of. The the open day, fifth day. That was probably the reason I did, I voted against it when we, when the previous board approved it, what are they doing on that fifth day? You know, when Anne and I met today, went over financials, I think if we go back to the five-day, should we decide to? You know, there's a lot of fear mongering going around, well, finances and we go back to the five-day, we're gonna be right back to when we started, but I don't see those. Structural issues like we had before, I don't see where we're gonna go down that same same path, so. How do you put the staff and the community at ease if we go back to five? The way we forecast or what, we're not gonna be going down that road, but it's gonna cost us a little bit more. On balance, to do it, but. I guess that number is kind of elusive some years, when you go year to year, so.
I think one thing that stands out for me in the conversation with M D was. Uh, right away. You asked a question about. The finances. And Rudy had told her what our fund downs percentage was at, and she came back and basically asked us, well, why are you applying for a four-day? You know, right off the bat, so I was like, whoa, okay. Um, so, you know, it does take the financial piece out of the. Equation because obviously we're, we're in a much better place than when we were before. Molly, what you said a few weeks ago, are we at home, you know, some of these kids in our district? You know, what they maybe have at home? That they could get out of school on the fifth day? That hit home for me, you know, there's, there's kids that maybe need to be in school at the fifth day. You know what? The questions. That I asked last week. I don't know how we can go. Not go back to a five-day without having answers to that we're doing the best we can for all those kids.
That's where I kind of started too, I think M D has made it clear that they want to know what benefits our students, like how are we making it better for them? And I don't have an argument for that, you know, can we say we're holding our own with test scores, yeah, maybe, but how are we testing our kids from not having them in school five days a week? I understand that there's a ton of community support, I think most employees would love a four-day a week. And I think it's great to know that from the community, but that doesn't. Hold much value in my opinion as to are we helping these kids that get the best education and the best experience we can? So the school board member, I just can't say it's better for them to be home and not be in school that fifth day. I think that's a hard argument to make.
My thought on that, and I I get that, because I, I held that position. But to me, that's where. That's where the compelling argument requirement enters in the equation. Because we, the district if it applied for, would have to have a compelling argument how it best suits our district's students. And that's how I was able to overcome that, not overcome it, change, that's how I changed my opinion on it, because I completely agree with you. I mean. There's many reasons that I'd like to see children, there are students in our, in our school every day to. Lots of things about beyond the academic reasons. But. You know, if the M D E will not allow us. Yes, I wasn't in that meeting, but Anne mentioned, you know, are you guys applying for it? Oh. We're, we're eligible to apply for it, doesn't mean we're gonna be granted the commission to do it. We're only granted the permission to do it. In my opinion, is is if we can show that it's better for our students. Under the current system versus a five-day school week and. That's probably a very difficult thing to do in a lot of ways, but that's a threshold that's been set by the Minnesota Department of Education. So that's. That's how I jostled that in my mind, Molly, in terms of how, you know, I, because I've been astonished repeatedly. Said we need a five-day school week, but.
Don't you think it perhaps, by the way, we need to know what that compelling argument is, I mean, like, what are we making as their? Like, just to just say, oh, it's a buy, and then if they approve, but what is your argument, like, what are, what's the compelling argument that? We need these kids to be in school four days a week and not five, I mean, I think you have to at least have an idea what that is before we go down that path. And I can't, I can't come up with that, that's the problem for me, I don't have an argument to why I think it's better for. And I, I can't come up with that. That's the problem for me. I don't have an argument to why I think it's better for students to not be in school that fifth day. So I feel like if we're gonna apply, we need to know that, like, how are we benefiting these kids from not being in school five days a week? And that's just the argument that I can't make. I don't know what it is. So I feel like if we're gonna apply, we need to know what that is ahead of time.
So when we applied the first time, we, we applied for the 21st century grant that offered programming on Mondays. Well, with the grant that is money provided for a couple of years and they're, what they expect you to do is sustain it after that. Uh, during that time that we had the 21st century grant, we worked really hard to have programming here. All this type of the high school and the warnings uh for students that maybe had limited English, special services, things like that. Um, the challenge with that is, you know, students know they have a choice, right, to, to come to that or not. So it was a challenge to get kids to come. Uh, we did have it was kind of, uh, say up and down with, with attendance, but it wasn't like a, a great number of students consistently attending the Monday programming. So it's also a challenge for staffing. Uh, on that Monday, it was a challenge at the high school of being staffed to program to run the programs. So. But that's what we had in the past. That's what helped us before.
How many years has it been since we?
Big question. It's been, it's been a few years. Yeah.
Brittany, Brenda, have any down? Anybody else?
With regard to the compelling argument. Brian, I'll ask you this question. I don't need details on the entire application. What is gonna be incorporated into the memorandums and attachments and exhibits, but would you anticipate if the board did take action for you to apply for the four day school week? That, that's kind of putting down the spot. I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean to make you the judge to determine what's compelling and what's not. We're taking direction from the board. So as part of the board, I take responsibility for that, but if you felt there weren't, there wasn't value investigating it and perhaps to learn even more about the district in general, regardless of the outcome. You see value in the application just in general, regardless of the outcome? Do you see value with, with you and staff going through that process, just internally evaluating our current status?
The one, the value that I see out of this process is uh getting feedback from our parents of our students. And that's where I see the value of it because we've heard from staff, right? We haven't heard from our, our parents that are not in both buildings. So that's where I see the value. Um, I do agree that we're going to, after meet with M D, they're going to, what are the kids gaining? What are they losing? And what's going on in that fifth day? What they said, when they leave Friday until Tuesday, what's happening? And that's what was one of their questions. That's what's our concern about. So during that research, we have to come up with something and that's where we have to work with the teachers. What are we gonna do? What is teaching and learning? What's gonna be different about it? And that's what they talked to us about. What's gonna be different?
Anybody like to make a motion? We need more discussion. So entertain a motion. We approve the application for flexible learning year 2022, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion. Okay. We don't have a motion, so we will move on fails. So it's only moving on for a five day.
If there's no motion second and to approve it, then we would be going back to a five days, which you told us. Yeah.
All right. Upcoming meetings, September 20th, 2021, regular meeting, public hearing on the abatement bond at 5:30 at Media Center. There was a work session scheduled for December fourth, sixth, sixth. We have nothing else, nothing to bring up on that. That'll also but January 10th, regular meeting, 2021, and that's been adjusted for holiday. January 13th to 14th is the MSBA conference. Anything else coming up? Yes, January 10th, 2022. And if anybody's still planning on going to the conference, get ahold of Emily. Okay. And you have delegate assembly coming up in December with MSBA. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Some question by Greg. Second leverage. Any discussion on journey? Here you go, discussion. Always in favor of a journey, signify the same act. All right, those close same, or here. Thanks, everybody.